I'd like to welcome you all to the November 4th, November 2014 Village Board Planning Board Meeting. My name is Lawrence Whitman, I'm the chair. Members present this evening are Rich Steffens, Michael Zerlules, Harsha and Brown Litten. Our secretary is Brogan Rose O'Donnell. And our planner is Brenda White, formerly known as Brenda Speth. Our liaison to the village board, Tom Rocco, is also here. Oh, he's there. Okay, we have no applications before us this evening. We've got some planning board minutes from the October 21st meeting to approve. And I will admit that I didn't do a good job reading them over yet. So I'm gonna ask from my perspective, unless anybody has any... I would like this table at a fill next meeting, please. I'd like to have more time to go over and get a lot of stuff that meeting. So this evening, despite having no applications, well, because we have no applications and we have time to do these kinds of things, we're gonna be doing some things that are proactive, more proactive than what we do normally, which is to react to an application. And there are several things that we know we need, that we can't do anything about right now. But there are some things that we'd like to get started with. In the, on the agenda and in an email that you got, were some sample code segments of how many? Five municipalities ways of dealing with design criteria so that the planning board can legally require adherence to certain design standards. And I'd like to discuss those this evening. Also, we've got several longstanding issues with code problems and so on that I'd like to start taking a swipe at cataloging at least and seeing what we can do to get them fixed. Maybe even attach priorities to them so we can do it in ways that make sense for making things better for us, our applicants and our village. Michael suggested... Michael, can you summarize the first one that you said about the comprehensive plan review? What I would like, Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Mr. Village Board trustee, is an update of what you know is happening with consultants for village boards review. They interviewed...
We interviewed three... Let me give you a rather quick summary. We interviewed three applicants. Each of them, I believe, made a quite good presentation. So it was not as though we were choosing among one good organization. But in casual conversation, different board members had different responses. We have had no further formal consideration of those three. We did have a meeting scheduled, that a joint town-village board meeting, at which we thought we would consider those applicants and start ranking them. But for reasons that are not still clear to me, the town called off their participation in that meeting. And therefore, we simply didn't have it.
For that meeting or for the process?
For that meeting.
Okay.
I believe, if I, do you know, is there another meeting scheduled? There is a...
There is.
Yeah. It's on an agenda now.
Okay. Okay. For a special joint meeting or for the...
I do not believe it's, is it a special meeting?
Yes.
Just for that purpose?
Yes, on the 18th, actually.
On the 18th, okay, good. Okay. So that's that part of it. The other part is after we, after the town and village select a firm to do this work for us, what our involvement and presumably the town planning board's involvement will be in this and what kind of shape that will take. Is there anything new there?
There, I don't believe there's anything new, but I can summarize the most recently expressed sentiments. And those sentiments included having at least one member of this planning board and one member of the planning board from the town, one member of the zoning board of appeals, and then one member of the zoning board of appeals from the town. At minimum, that is the influence, well, not the influence, the membership of the planning board and zoning boards. And then there would also be other persons, the planner would be a member. I believe that up to nine members, at 1.10 members of that board.
Like a designated hitter kind of thing?
Like.
Okay.
But as you know, I brought to the board your interest in having more than mere involvement, but that you believed that you should have a stronger influence on the process. That was not received lightly, but in the negotiations over who was going to sit on that kind of a board, began distributing it out. And each of the three consultants had opinions about what makes up a good oversight board. And they all included having significant representation by the planning boards of the joint municipalities.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Michael, when you suggested this as one of the topics, is there anything specifically that you wanted to push out this evening?
No, I sort of wanted to keep it in front of everybody. And again, just reiterate that I think it's important. Ideally, it would be, I think, it would be ideal if the planning boards could, my feeling is, actually take the lead in terms of helping to move the process forward in whether, and that can take a number of forms, whether it's chairing this committee that seems to be essential to this or helping to frame a sort of an outline and serve more as the kind of the point of people. So anyway, but beyond that, we'll have to wait and see until we get a consultant.
Okay.
That was it.
All right, thanks. I would like to discuss this, the design guidelines thing. But before we do that, I wanted to... We received, as you've gotten, an updated site plan and some more information from the applicant, Cafrey Property Management Corp., from there and from here. And this brought to mind how planning board processes and deals with applications that are submitted. We have a published deadline of two weeks before the meeting to be put on an agenda. However, it's not clear, it's clear in the code. And I can read to you a snippet of the code. It's clear in the code that these applications have to be complete before any clocks start. And let me see if I can find it here. So 21223A, under the site plan section says, "Until such time, as a complete application, including all the required information and documentation in proper form, has been received by the building inspector, the application shall not be considered as officially submitted." And this came up, we've been speaking about this. We as a planning board and we, Brenna and I, and perhaps individual building inspectors over the years. But there have been submissions that were clearly not complete, such as the last one that came for the Cafrey Property Management, where they only addressed parking even though the building inspectors told them that they needed more, they needed a full site plan. So I thought that that shouldn't really have come to us last meeting because it wasn't complete. And there had been other applications that have come to us, not complete. And the code doesn't require this. But I asked Bren if we could get from the building department and from her some memo of review, building department issues determinations for applications. I wanted those to come to us before the meeting so that we would have the benefit of their information before we have to sit in front of the applicant. So that we have as much information as possible. So that part isn't mentioned in code. And also, the applications that the, that applicants see and the instruction sheets that they see, don't really say anything about this. They don't quote the section of the code that says, "It's gotta be complete before the calendar starts." They just say, for example, "Mr. Gillespie of Cafrey" said that this was delivered in the deadline, you know, before, two weeks before the meeting. And it may very well be complete. I didn't look at it, I just saw it 20 minutes ago. But from my perspective, this is something that should be more routinized and clarified so that applicants know that it takes more than just dropping it off to the building department to say, "I'm done, it's complete," or "it's been submitted." It should be reviewed by the building department, by the building inspectors. And they should verify that it is administratively complete, that all the forms are present, that all the forms are correctly filled out, that the site plan has the required elements, and so on. So I would request that the application instruction sheets, I guess there's a cover sheet or something like that, isn't there?
Check list, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's been updated. I saw you, you came up with some PDF forms of the applications. I don't know if you've made changes to the instruction sheet.
Well, actually, interestingly enough, the form that I made, while it was a replica of what already existed,
Yes.
the mayor also created a PDF for the site plan subdivision, which is more, it isn't exactly like the forms that we've been using. He emailed everyone about a couple of weeks ago and I didn't see it. So we might actually just be going with that, which doesn't have an instruction sheet, but we can easily create a cover letter.
Well, I don't really care about the new PDF so much as having something in place that an applicant can get in their package, whether it's online or when it comes to building department, what's involved and how do I apply to get...
Maybe we'll just make one.
Well, there is something now, but it doesn't...
I don't think it's as detailed.
It probably isn't.
Yeah.
It probably isn't. But that's something that Bren, perhaps you can find some examples of that. But I want to make sure that it's explicit to show the sections of code that say that it has to be complete before it counts as having been submitted.
Yeah. Also, in the code, it says that we only require seven copies. But I believe we told the applicant 10. But he only, I'm realizing this now, he only gave us seven because that's what the code says. So maybe we want to update it to be 10?
Well, the code would have to be changed. It isn't just the instructions. If it says in code seven, then we have to request this change for the code. But that's really light stuff for now. It's, the other thing that's not in the instructions that I saw was a couple of years ago, we made a resolution to require all drawings be submitted, not only in hard copy, but as PDF files. And that should be on the instructions. And it should be known to applicants that this is a requirement.
Yeah.
So all these things have to be consolidated and made really clear that we're certain that applicants know what's expected of them. So we don't have this kind of juggling stuff. Does anybody have anything to add or any comments or...
I've got, just thinking of a question that if...
Yes.
Somebody came to us, two neighbors came to us and went to a lot line revision?
Yes.
And they wanted to exempt from their map the topo. Why would we need a topo on a lot line revision?
The subdivision is a separate matter. And I don't, I think we don't need a topo for that, but...
That's not my point. My point is that what if somebody had a situation like that where they wanted to get exempted from something? They couldn't submit a complete application because they want to get exempted. How do they get exempted? Did they come before us or did they go to the building inspector to get exempted?
Well, I don't think the building inspector can exempt it. I think we have to do that. And I think a pre-application meeting is the place to handle that kind of stuff. We can then tell them, if they explain to us, this is what we're doing, it's something special, we just want to make sure that it's clear that I own this tree and they don't and...
I built my garage on this lot.
Then, then those kind of, I mean, we can, I don't know if the word is exempt, but we can not require some things, we can waive the requirement for some things. I'll check with George to see what the right procedure is for that.
Probably done as a sketch plan.
I think so. I think that's the best, that's a really good use for that meeting. When, when, you know, they don't know, we don't know. Rather than have anything, go to a point where they have to go through an onerous process first, we can just chat about it and say, "If these are the conditions, if you both agree to this, if this is this, then just a simple drawing is fine." I mean, there may have to be a survey done. I imagine there would have to be some, you know, something regular that has to be reported.
Eventually, they're gonna have to file something, so...
Yes, it has to be reported, so if that gets done, so...
But my question would more or less, what if somebody wanted to get exempt from something? That's the only thing I could think of.
Yeah, well, there are probably other things that we would be able to waive. But, you know, certain smaller projects that might not need such a complete... I mean, this thing, this Mr. Cafrey's project, that's kind of a big deal. It's got all kinds of implications of, you know, grading and drainage and everything else, so...
Samaris, are you saying that we want to establish a stepwise guide for the applicant so that they'll know what needs to be done or make sure the application's complete? But we also want to have the option of having a pre-application meeting on certain...
Pre-application meetings, I think would always be encouraged. I think they make sense. Now, there are some applicants that know the process well enough that they will need to or want to. We can't require it, but I think it's a great way to do things. We'll give them, you know, 20 minutes and we can talk about some of the details of the application. But, and I think that's where we can make some adjustments or reinforce some procedures and requirements.
Okay. Now, will that pre-application meeting be simply suggested or will it be mandatory or...
Right now, I don't feel comfortable making it mandatory. There are some applications, some applicants that might want to avoid the extra two weeks or whatever it would be. They might, you know, they might know what they want, there's no question about it. If they can't get that, then they're walking. I don't know, I don't see a reason now to, I'm happy to consider it. If anybody has any strong feelings about it, Rich likes the idea of having...
I like the application.
Yeah.
You brought up another one, the drainage issue was a good one.
Yeah.
That's better than mine. You know, why would somebody go through a complete drainage study on a little neighborly dispute?
Yeah.
Just to get in front of us? That would be, but I think what has to happen is they've got to go to the building inspector and say, "What do I do with drainage site?" And say, "Well, then have a pre-application meeting with the planning board."
Right, exactly.
And discuss it.
Yeah, I think if it comes from the department.
But everything really has to start with the building department.
That's, he's still addressing it, addressing it via the...
That's true. Bren, what do you think?
I think the pre-application is a good suggestion for folks who don't want to start with everything else.
Okay. And is it too much of a burden to require, require, ask for or expect the building department's determinations for applications or something from you for a more difficult application so that we would have the benefit of your reviews before the meeting?
No, I think we've been trying to do that for all applications, so...
Right, right.
So that would become like an executive summary? A quick summary of what they're doing?
Right now, I'm vague, if you want me to...
I don't think I need a summary. I think I need your review to point out any, any facts that might not be obvious with this, if there are some real issues with an application that need further things, that need engineer review or something like that that we didn't consider.
And I think the building inspector's determination is a little bit more specific as to how they got to this point, so...
Yeah.
I read a thing from Katie Silverberg, one of the emails, in which she said, "Coming before the ZBA, a lot of people come asking for one variance and what they really need is two."
Yeah.
You know, and she doesn't want that to find out when they're on the board.
Right.
You know, you want it ahead of time, so... This would be the same thing, we don't want people coming to us with a set of plans that we didn't want to give.
Yep. Okay, so...
Bren, is, I'm sorry, does the term "pre-application meeting" exist anywhere in...
I believe so.
It does here, yes. Yeah.
It exists in our code?
I think so.
Yeah, I think it does.
Yeah, I'm positive it's got a fee for it, so, yeah.
The fee is a hundred bucks or less?
It works into the next step, so it's not an extra, it's not an extra fee if we ask them for it.
It's got a fee, it must be there.
Right, but there isn't anything, I mean, I don't think it says in there that we won't take action on it, that nothing we say is binding, da-da-da. But it would be good to have that in the instructions that explains, you know, what it is. Have some sort of a time, not limit, but time structure around it to say that, you know, "We'll give you 20 minutes. You can ask questions, we'll give you feedback." And, you know, based on that, you can, you could submit or not your application. You can talk to your attorney, talk to your engineer, talk to the building department. But this is what we think so far.
Okay.
But we're not here to design your project.
Thank you. I'm not.
No.
Okay. Okay, Bren, would you like to give us some background on the design guidelines?
Sure.
Business we're talking about?
So Sally came to Lawrence and I a couple of weeks ago and suggested, wanted to talk about design guidelines. So we wanted to bring it up at this board because obviously it's a planning issue. There was a suggestion of perhaps having a separate design committee. And we're not positive that that's necessary because that seems like an additional step that could probably be solved here, especially since we've heard from this board that you want to be doing more. So we thought design standards might be one way to do it. So I came up with five communities, mostly in New York, that I sent you examples of. The Village of Casanova is my old sampling grounds, so I helped with those guidelines. And they pretend to be a Finger Lake, they're a lake that's close to the Finger Lake region. And then I pulled, Skinny Atlas, New York is south of Syracuse. They also have a lake and is a design community. I also thought of Durham, South Carolina, North Carolina rather, because I've been there and they are the kind of community that has a CVS that doesn't look like a CVS. And, you know, brick signs that are shorter to the ground and not huge in size and obtrusive. So I thought we could look at the, we could first of all, talk about what you think about design standards and the planning board's role in that. And secondly, look at some examples and see what we like and don't like about them.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Rocco?
I just suggested also that in the B3 project that was approved by this board and adopted by village board, there is a section on design standards. And they're actually quite explicit.
Yeah.
And I think worth keeping, you know, in the fore. I think they might work well even beyond the business, this extended new business district.
Okay, so you gave us a lot to read.
Did.
Yeah, it's a lot.
And can you guide us through? I mean, I don't have the eyes or the knowledge to go through each of them one by one. If there are highlights that you can share with us or any other kind of guidance?
I don't have highlights off the top of my head specifically from code. But if you look through, most of them have pictures in them and design sketches. And I think that's really important to show people, not just in words, but in pictures. This is what we want and this is what we don't want. I think that's a great illustration. You can see it in the small lot zoning design guidelines, which are City of Fremont. And I don't remember where that is.
California.
Yes, thank you. They, this is, I think, the thickest one. And they have a lot of photos and design sketches for each. The Village of Casanova is probably the smallest. It's a pretty rural county, Madison County.
Yeah.
But certainly, I think, similar to Auster County. But still wanted to have a say in what their buildings look like. So I thought this was a good, similarly sized, they have a college, Casanova College is there, so... And they also have a town of Casanova, so they have that.
A town and village and a college, great.
Town and village culture. So I think those are a couple of good ones to look at.
Did it have a pit? Did it have a pit?
I don't think so, but maybe I'll look for one.
Okay. Because if we could find a village that has a town and a college and a pit, I'm willing to look at their design now.
The one from, I don't know, that says Appendix A Downtown D Design District Standards is a little bit older, but still has a lot of, you know, we want buildings up front, we want, you know, big porches and we don't want buildings that don't follow existing facade lines and et cetera, et cetera. So a little...
Was that the Skinny Atlas one, I think?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to add something to Bren's overview of how this came about. When Sally asked us our opinions of, I think she proposed it as a separate design review committee. And she said that they would have, we'd have to make some code changes so that they could do this. Establish the committee and then make code changes to, to give them the authority to acquire these kind of things. I mentioned a couple of things. One, how difficult it has been to get enough committed volunteers to populate our commissions and committees and to have enough... committed volunteers to populate our commissions and committees, and to have another one. I don't know if that's a great idea. Also, to impose another step that an applicant would have to go through. Presumably with a timeframe that couldn't be done in parallel to to planning board, this would add another weeks or months to the process. And I thought if they're making code changes, make them to authorize the planning board to review that stuff. We've got none of us are architects, I think that's right. But we know what the village looks like, we know what we would like it to look like, and and I think we can add some good things to the process. We can ask for experts' advice and so on, but that's how I thought it would make sense for the planning board to have this this function, and I wanted to get your ideas about that, whether you think it's.
I think first you have to start with what's the vision look like? I mean, are we trying to make this look, what's the town in New Jersey, Cape May, that has all the Victorian homes? Are we trying to get that kind of a theme? Are we trying to go to a historical New Pauls theme? Are we trying to go to?
Do we even want a theme?
Do we want this to be Disneyland? I mean.
No, I wasn't thinking of theme so much as to promote tasteful things that are in harmony with what we have without going to big box.
You know, I love the Museum of Modern Art, but I don't understand it. And I'm sure it's very tasteful art because it's in the museum, but I don't understand it. I mean, I think recently we approved a building that I don't understand.
Which one is that?
The Annes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's sitting there on Main Street, glass and steel. I don't see where that fits into anything, but then again, I don't know what I would say was the overall flavor of Main Street New Pauls. You know, it's kind of hodgepodgey. I mean, I don't know, 15 years ago, I never thought Starbucks would ever fit into our village. It's become a fixture in our village. So, you know, I don't know if I'm the one who's going to be legislating taste, because I don't know if I've been right that many times.
No, it isn't a matter of legislating taste so much as as having some say over what, for example, if someone were to tear down some existing stores and, like, we had an applicant.
Yeah.
At a pre-application meeting, like.
Right, I'd hope he comes back.
Me too. And his idea seemed good, it was very nice. So I think we would know that this is, this looks like a thing that we would be proud of to say this is on our Main Street, and the 51 Main Street, is that the address? You know, the changes that were precipitated by the county planning board's comments, adding the brickwork and so on, I think improved it. You know, what else you would say is a very small lot, you know, there's no... So anyhow, I don't, I don't have answers here, Rich. I just know that that there are some things that we can prevent, some real problems that we can prevent.
I just don't think the law says you can't build anything ugly in New Pauls. We have to have some sort of a theme or some sort of a vision as to what this is going to look like.
Well, this is what the design guidelines are meant to provide, and the photographic or the illustrations are a good way to do it, to say this, not this. You know, roof lines that aren't just this, that have some interesting interesting characteristics, you know, some things that make it look more like a box, more like a building that are boxed and.
Well, I forget, Fong drew this new building across the street from Ulster Savings. I mean, she would take a vote, beautiful or not beautiful. I mean, I love that building.
I abstained.
But, you know, I mean, because it's in the eye of the beholder, right?
I mean, the thing is, so these five plans, they sort of seem to cover the range of of concepts from what you seem to be referring to, which is a bit leaning more towards architectural review, and being very specific about, you know, this type of roof line and this type of facade and this type of massing. But other aspects of some of these plans, the details are sort of more broad brush-like, and things that would fit very well coming out of a master plan process, such as wanting to make sure that you have Main Street sidewalks or at least a certain width and certain number of street trees and certain types of, a lot of them address issues about pedestrian walkways, and almost all of them in downtown areas and residential areas want to have the pushes towards pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-scaled design. So that's a whole nother aspect of the design. It isn't specific buildings or even thematic, but it's about making sure that sidewalks, for instance, continue across driveways, and that that the delineation between a sidewalk and a driveway is that the driveway is interrupted by the sidewalk, so that pedestrians see a sidewalk and not a curb cut. Trying to minimize curb cuts, trying to put parking behind buildings, all that kind of stuff, which and the short answer that I think is that this should absolutely be a planning board process. I mean, it's completely consistent with what we do. And creating the design guidelines might require, depending on how it happens, whether it comes out of the master plan process or not, might require a group of people to get together in order to create them, and then the village board will.
Or help from the planning department.
And, I mean, there are lots of resources that we have at our disposal that we can make good use of.
Some of the things that I really liked, in addition to the drawings and the photos, were a couple of them, I think it was Durham and.
Farmingdale has.
The second one.
Has some aspects I think are really good, because it starts off with some general design concepts, kind of talks about the environment, and then it goes into things like guidelines, which are still kind of general, and then it talks about strategies that they're trying to achieve. I like that. I mean, you know, it talks in some general terms without being very specific to saying you must have a specific type of brick facade, but it does say that some of the characteristics of small-town architecture have been lost, and they would like to see those improved. I think something like that, which we could we could generally express without nailing down, saying you must use only red brick, something of that nature, then I think we're pretty good, but it's, I mean, that was one that I actually was impressed with. The others were, got into a lot of detail very quickly.
Yeah. One of the things I liked about the Skinny Atlas one is it's very simply written. The language is not megalistic, it's clear, and it says things like, I mean, it says, just looking for a simple example. Some of it is a wish list that's a lot more like a master plan, like, "All utilities shall be underground." I mean, that would be great, but who's going to pay for that necessarily? But it also is very clear about things that you can't do, it says, you know. For instance, it refers to trademark buildings, so that the architecture of the building identifies the particular retail use, and it simply says, I believe it says, "Traditional buildings are prohibited." Couldn't be much simpler than that. Doesn't mean that chain stores can't come in, but if you want to come in, your building can't look like the one on Route 9 or whatever.
I mean, we already have some design guidelines in our code with respect to size, for example. Certain height can't be lit from inside, all that number and distance from the building and so on, so there are, I think there are lots of really good examples in in these and probably in many other codes that we can we can, but I think you're right that keeping it simple is good, having a list of things that that we would like to achieve from this that can act as as the baseline for our decisions without having to list every possibility of do's and don'ts, but just to, you know, to keep the flavor of a smaller village than than to having a Tarjay or a Walmart.
I mean, I think Rich's point is good that you need, in order to write design guidelines, you do need to answer the question, what is it that you want? What are you writing them for? What's the purpose? And so, although I don't think it necessarily needs to be thematic, and it might sort of organically grow out of the master plan process, they do have to hang on something, which is, you know, what is it that you're trying to, you know, what is it that you're trying to preserve in terms of the character of your community, and what is it that you would like to give developers and homeowners and business owners the latitude to consider in coming up with new ideas?
And one of my pet peeves is I thought for sure with my 40 years of doing things in front of planning boards in New Pauls, that parking was required to be behind the facade of the building. In a garage or behind the facade. But yet, as you go around the village, how many garages have you seen now converted over to family rooms and the parking is in the driveway in front of the house? That's because Bren and I looked in the log, we couldn't find it. Parking is allowed in front of the lawn.
Not on the lawn.
Not on the lawn, but in front of the house.
Have you seen some of these lawns? They're parking lots.
But that's not.
But we don't have delineated driveways on most of these, or parking areas, plus the original parking is gone. The original parking left, became another bedroom or. So I mean, that's an easy design standard that we could put back.
Well, we can certainly.
And on my laundry list for you, by the way, I do have that, and I have sidewalks and some other.
Okay, Liz, you want to say something?
Yeah, I hesitate. I'm leery of the term "theme." And I would be more open to using the term "theme" if we are clear that we're using that in an extremely broad sense, because "theme" just sounds too much like Disney World. You know, and we don't want to be some weird cookie cutter Disney World town. If anything, New Pauls is the exact opposite of that.
Well, we also have enough examples of un-themed here that to have a theme that matches what we have is.
Yeah, then the theme would be eclectic.
For years on Church Street, there was a little building, the second one on the left, that for years was painted blue and had the theme of the Beatles, Lucy in the Sky with Diamonds. I don't know if any of you remember this. John Lennon painted on the side and rainbows and it was an iconic building for years. Someone did it in the late 60s and it stayed that way until well into the 80s. Man, oh man, how would we ever approve that, you know, as a paint job? But yet, every so often I dig out that picture and I look at it, and I have fond memories of being a young kid on the streets back then and seeing that building.
Well, you know, there are things like the, like the brick wall on the Bistro.
Yeah. With the. I like that.
I don't think that design standards have to discourage that type of thing. I'm not sure that paint color is, from my perspective, paint color should never be mandated. Who cares what color it is? It can change, so. You know, as far as painting, you know, a mural on the side of your house, if it were up to me, which it's not, go for it. Murals are allowed in the village, so I don't think you would want to change that necessarily.
Yeah, right, the design, I mean, it's sort of, it's up to us, you know, as a community to decide what guidelines, how rigid they become and how detailed, you know, how much you bore down. I think that really the questions to start asking are sort of, you know, I get the sense that part of the reason that we want to do this is to take the information we already have in different sections of the code and in a few other documents, and add to those and condense them into a single place where people can come and say, you know, this is the, these are the guidelines, so you don't have to look in a whole lot of scattered places. I mean, that to me is one advantage.
And to make it less arbitrary.
Yeah.
Capricious.
Right, but I mean, as you pointed out, a lot, some of these are already in there, and maybe they're specific enough and need to be illustrated, maybe they need to be made clearer and illustrated. But then ultimately putting it in one section of the code or creating it as a as a document like we have for landscape guidelines and stuff, that's another decision, whether to codify it. You have examples of both.
And then we have a code thing that says a building is supposed to be along Main Street, and we have an applicant come in front of us who has a very nice tree there, and we tell him, "Man, we'll be building back a little bit. We want to save the tree."
Yeah, but the code as it exists now allowed for that, because the code referenced or in line with a like existing structures, and a like existing structure was set back already, so.
Couple buildings up, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's part of.
That's what made that work, and I'm very happy it did.
I mean, it should be, that's the whole point.
That's the point, that we should be able to design these things without making them, because we're really a compliance board, right?
That the applicant should be able to design these things, given whatever guidelines exist or can be can be developed, so that it doesn't end up being something that's garish or or formula or or big box or whatever it is.
I mean, to take a bigger example, when when Woodland Pond presented its first plan proposal to the planning board way back, whatever the acreage was, 60-some acres, they were, the buildings were scattered everywhere. It was a dispersed community, not a set of large buildings, and the planning board took it upon themselves right away because of the environmental issues there and to say, because let's come up with another plan where most of the buildings are only one location and the bulk of the land is untouched. And that was a radical change right from the very beginning. That was purely the planning board's.
Michael, as an aside, I wasn't here then, but was there any consideration to what it would look like from, let's say?
Yes, and, yes. They did a visual analysis, which means that they floated these white balloons up in the air at the height of the building, and then took photographs from all around, but the reality is that balloons and 80,000 square feet of building are two entirely different things.
The biggest difference is at night.
Yeah. Right, and there's no lighting analysis.
Where'd that come from?
And the other thing that they could have done, but, so there's that fallacy just dipped into visual analysis. The other problem is that the developer made it clear that they wanted their residents to have the view, and so trees that were there, that could have been saved, were taken down.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I've seen presentations to Ulster County Planning Board where there were lots of simulated views of what, for example, it was Nevilley to show that they were adding horizontally more than vertically, so that it wasn't going to be a shock to the views of this surrounding area, but it showed, you know, simulated views of these things, and it was very effective and helpful to say that this is this is good. It's not going to be something that's going to be such a blight on the.
Yeah, I think you could do it now with like 3D computer work, and that would be you'd get a much better sense of the building.
Okay, so how do we move from here? How do we proceed from here? I think, I'm going to Ulster County Planning Board tomorrow night, and I'll ask other other board members what they know about this. board members what they know about this process, how to start it, how to develop it, and I'm sure that Mr. Doyle will be happy to give us some pointers, but beyond that, are there any other things that you think we should be doing now besides spending more time going through these things and picking out parts that we like and...
No, I think that's a good, that's a good place to be.
That's a good one. I'd be happy to write a summary.
Well, what about taking a look at the zoning that we currently have and fixing some of those things that we know design-wise don't work, like parking in front of the house or parking in front of the building and changing now?
Yeah.
We know that, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
I mean, there's several of those types of things that, you know... I mean, eventually someday we'll be looking at energy standards.
I would hope so.
I would hope so.
If we're around law, huh?
Well, eventually the state is going to mandate in the code a lot of new changes coming down for energy standards, but it needs to be headed at curve on some of this stuff.
Yeah.
And here we're bringing up the idea of some of the green design items that even our public works should be looking at.
Yeah.
Some of those are actually in some of the PDFs, like ideas for mitigating storm water. That could easily be a design standard.
Well, that's part of SUCRA already. What's the threshold for SWIP now?
One acre.
So there's not very many village properties.
Yeah. Yeah, the part of any other village.
Okay, so, we have some good homework here, Bren, and we'll have some time before the next meeting. I would love it if the building department could look at Mr. Gillespie's memo and the submission, see what they think of as completion. If there, I didn't look to see what sorts of engineering claims were made by Mr. Gillespie.
Again, completion doesn't mean that we agree with it, right?
Correct. Oh, absolutely. I mean, there are...
Because as I look at this, the parking situation really bothers me.
There are two levels of completeness. There's administrative completeness, which means that it's got, if it requires a site plan, the site plan has all the elements that are necessary and so on. And then when we get it, we'll determine that it's complete, given zoning code and so on, that isn't necessarily the administrative part. But I'd be happy to have their quick review so that we can tell them that it's okay or it's not okay, so we can at least schedule them for the next meeting and get the process Anybody have anything else? Mr. Rocco, do you have any?
The only thing that comes to mind is, it sounds like beating a dead horse, but somehow design standards got built into that V3 and people like us contributed to those and they got adopted.
Yeah.
So if you want to know how to get started, how did that get started?
Well, we had a consultant.
But I understand we had a consultant, but the motive force came from people in the village. The consultant put the pieces, you know, in a visual way, but the force to get it done came from here.
It might have come from the property owners there, but...
Yeah. I think it actually, I think it actually started probably mostly with the mayor and then working with some property owners and then meeting with property owners and ultimately bringing the consultant in.
Yeah.
But no, it's a good document. Agreed. Worth having a look at.
The other thing is, I'll show you all pictures of Parma, Italy, which has a theme that is gorgeous and you would love to live there. And it's extraordinary. And I think when we were there, I think this is not a movie set. People live here every day. This is where they go and they probably throw up against the wall and, you know, their dogs go over the street and stuff, but it's gorgeous and it's clearly thematic. Culture.
Okay. Bren, are there any things that you think we should be looking at or doing with respect to the design, please?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I don't.
At last meeting, I asked you members to give me ideas of things that you'd like to discuss in this vein, and I got something from Michael and nobody else. I'd like you to really think about this a bit and please do give me your ideas of what kinds of stuff you'd like to do in sessions like this. I'd like to make them productive and relevant to what we're doing here. So thank you all very much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. A second? All in favor? All in right discussion first? Okay. All in favor? I, I, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
So Bren, I'm going to stop down tomorrow.